Good evening, everyone. I will officially call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, October 27 to order. All rise, please, as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start tonight with public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Board of Selectmen? Yes.
According to an article in the Hartford Current, October 22, 2014, it states, and I quote, "Connecticut's gubernatorial contenders battled Tuesday for the support of mayors and first selectmen," end quote. This was at the convention center of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities in Hartford. The convention of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, where Simsbury's first selectman Mary Glassman enrolled eight members of her executive staff, engineering, finance, pseudo-town manager, assistant to the director of administrative services, Glassman's executive secretary, planning, public works, and insurance administrator, for their junket to Hartford for this political event. Also attending was Selectman Lisa Hevna, heir apparent to the position of first selectman. First elected Mary Glassman hired her retired executive secretary at $29.86 an hour to remain in the office since the entire executive office was vacant. I am concerned that the town is actively pursuing the purchase of the Hudson property. This board voted to appropriate $150,000 for the sale of the property and additional $50,000 for clearing the house. There will also be a loss of $5,000 a year in taxes. First elected Mary Glassman has continually asked for a long-range plan before appropriating money to a project that nobody in her staff can address, and yet this board voted for the sale to go forward. Without any additional costs addressed for a fragile piece of property that could cost in the millions, this purchase of the property should be rejected. The risk to the taxpayer is unknown. The town should not be in the real estate business. Without knowing anything about additional costs, this project should be rejected, and this board should withdraw their vote to approve the purchase. We spent $11 million for the Elite at the Walker Schools property, and now we're told that we might need another appropriation of $500,000 for trails and other enhancements. We were given inaccurate information about the purchase of this property, and we should not be cajoled into buying another white elephant. There are areas of boat launches in town at Sycamore Park, Tarifill Park, Curtis Park, and the Crew House launch. We do not need another launch that would cost taxpayers in the millions for permits and other unanticipated costs to upgrade the property for public use. I would urge the Board of Finance and the Planning Commission to reject this proposal. Another property that the town purchased was Dewey Farm. At that time, it was better than apple pie. As things change, so does the town's interest in accumulating residential property. Last weekend, the Dewey house was burned down as a training session for the fire department. As I drove past the fire, there was what appeared to be black toxic smoke, so thick you could hardly see the road. Were the people at the site in danger from inhaling the smoke? I am very concerned that Sims Croft Echo had a no-bid contract to build walks on Owensport Boulevard. According to the town policies, all projects over $10,000 must go out to bid. Why did Mike Girard, president of Sims Croft Echo, receive preferential treatment? Now that the marijuana factory is open for business, I would like to know when first elected Mary Glassman is having a ribbon-cutting ceremony highlighting the town's huge economic development project. Since medical marijuana is now being used by many people with medical issues, does the town's insurance policy cover the cost of the medical marijuana? Now that the Performing Arts has completed their projects and are required to give the town an accounting of their revenues and expenditures, has the town received a financial statement for them? From them. With an increase in tailgating at the concerts, it appears that parking has become an issue and that food and alcohol vendors are not generating as much revenue as expected. The businesses near the events have their parking spaces used by concert-goers, losing revenue during the concerts. Is this economic development? Many tailgaters appear to be extremely intoxicated before they enter the concert with no controls in place. The Simsbury Police Department has 822 pistol permits on record from October 1, 2001 to October 21, 2014. Other towns have data on the increase of pistol permits issue. All those people can carry their guns when going to concerts. With an increase in gun permits, an increase in gun violence, and an increase of alcohol and drug consumption, the public are placed in danger at these events. People with gun permits can carry a gun in town hall and all town property. Our elected officials and employees can bring their guns to work, placing the public at risk. Is there a town policy restricting carrying a gun on public property or at work? The decision on whether John Hampton, our state representative, is living in a room in a medical building at 30 B Caffey--
If you could summarize, Mrs. Coe, it's been five and a half minutes.
That is out of bounds.
Very quickly.
With an 15 zone has not been addressed by our town attorney, Bob DiCresenzo. He is waiting after the election to give his opinion. John Hampton has not paid his taxes, and John Hampton has voted against increasing the minimum wage. John Hampton voted to decrease the area for higher penalties for drug use around the schools. John Hampton promised residents that he could reverse the post office decision to close Tarifill. That did not happen. John Hampton has promised--
Okay, we're at six minutes, so I'm gonna move on to the next--
--that he is in favor of a senior--
I'm gonna move on to the next speaker.
--to be built for $58 million in Simsbury, which would increase taxes and is not needed and probably won't happen. Another unfulfilled promise.
All right, are you--
John Hampton wants everyone in Simsbury to be--
Thank you, Mrs. Coe. Would anyone else like to--
--with excess taxes since he doesn't pay any taxes to Simsbury.
Hey, you're ignoring me, Mrs. Coe.
John Hampton voted for $19 million--
Okay, now we're at six and a half minutes. I think you're cutting it to other people's--
Okay, I'm just finishing one paragraph.
Okay, this is six and a half minutes, and I'd like to--
Appropriation--
You can talk at the end of the meeting. Anyone else would like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Additional public schools are operated by local elected boards--
You'd like to cede your time to Mrs. Coe.
I'm not conceding--
Then why don't you get started, Mr. Cowe?
Mary, don't put words in my mouth, please.
Well, can I finish this at the end of the meeting?
This is an issue that I'll talk about on my time.
Now we're at seven minutes, and courtesy to other people, I'll ask the board at the end. I'll ask the board at the end, Mr. Cowe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ironic, I was gonna talk about free speech tonight, and here we have a good example of it. We tell everybody we're for free speech, and you're not.
Well, it's five minutes, our policy, Mr. Cowe.
Are you gonna talk, or am I--
No, I just want to clarify that we--
It's my time, or is it your time?
Yeah, and I haven't started your time yet, so go ahead.
How many times, how many times do I have?
You have five minutes, starting when you begin.
Five minutes, okay, thank you. What I'm speaking about is free speech. And these political signs that I have out on Route 10, that's free speech. And that's been to the Supreme Court. And what do we have here? We have a senator from the 8th District, and we have a representative from the 16th District that are dictating whether or not I can have free speech. There's no two ways about it. They go up, they pick up the phone, they call the Commissioner of Transportation. The Commissioner of Transportation gives the order. They come out from either Simsbury, or they come out from Route 10 in Avon, and they pick up the signs. And that's, they're infringing on my free speech. And you know, people say to me, "Well, what are you running for?" You know what I'm running for? I'm running because of the corruption that's in the 5th District. And the corruption goes way, way back. It goes back to John Roland. He was a congressman from the 5th District. And you can talk all you want to talk, but the delegates come from Simsbury that elect the person that goes to the federal office, which is the 5th Congressional District in Washington. He's elected by the delegates from Simsbury. So the fanatican and the hooligan and the whole bit is wrong, because you're controlling free speech. And people come to me and they say, "What do you want to..." Like the press, Ken Byron came to me and he says, "What do you want to run for?" I says, "Well, you tell everybody if you're not happy and you have a corrupt Simsbury and a corrupt 5th Congressional District, how do you change it? You run." And you're not gonna get anything out of John Hampton, the Democrat, and you're not gonna get anything out of the Republican, 'cause they're one and two of the same. They never change. Good example is this board. We elected four Republicans, and we have two Democrats. The majority rules, but not on this board, because the four Republicans, i.e. the deputy for selectmen, she says she's a Democrat, but she votes as a-- she says she's a Republican, but votes as a Democrat. She seconds every motion that Ms. Hefner makes. And I sit in her, and so why do I want to run? I want to change things. Why do I want to run? Don't you get it? We're corrupt. And it starts at where they appoint the delegates. There's where-- And it started back at John Roland, then along came Donovan, then after Donovan, we have Ms. Lisa Wilson Foley, that whole bit. And here we're back with Roland again, the 5th District. It's gotta stop, and that's why I'm running. And you know, you may, you try to embarrass people as if you don't know what you're talking about. If you look at the law, 13-A-129, 13-B-17 through 19. And this is a summary. And this is, the Supreme Court of the United States says that political signs are free speech. If a woman wants to put out a sign in front of her house, that's free speech. So who is a political hack, like the Democratic representative from Simsbury, to say, "No free speech, no political signs on Route 10"? And they get together as a cabal, and they decide whether or not I'm gonna have a sign. And it's right here. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that display of political and other type of signs-- pardon me-- on residential property is unique, important, and protects means of communication in towns. The court held lower court rulings declared ordinance had been banned residential signs as unconstitutional. And it's not me, Mary, it's not me talking, Madam First Selectwoman, it's the Legislative Office of Legislative Research, the General Assembly. That's the assembly that you go to. You worked for them at one time, I think, the General Assembly, or you were the legislative lawyer to the legislature, whatever. And that's probably why we're paying for Ms. Betty Hudson the $150,000 that we have to come up with. And that brings me to two questions I'd like to ask the chair with your permission.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you the same amount of time I gave Mrs. Cowe. So you have about a minute more.
The first question is on Mr. Houlihan. He was asked to handle the Ethel Walker School. I've asked, and I've been waiting for some of the colleagues that are sitting on the board to ask, what are we paying Mr. Houlihan to represent Ethel Walker? The last time he represented him, the record shows $64,000. And then the next, the next question I have is, what's the final cost gonna be for the Ms. Hudson's buying the property? We, I think you bought it already, and that was done backwards. You bought the property, now you're waiting for the planning board to approve it. The planning board has no idea what it's gonna cost, and you're all gonna vote on it tonight. Is that good government? I don't think so. And then the last thing I'd like to mention to you, here we are, two years with public safety, and we still don't have a police contract. Those men and women, they go on the job every day, they put their life on the line, and we don't even give them enough courtesy to say, "We're gonna give you a contract." They've been working out of a contract.
Thank you, Mr. Cowe.
And now, let me close. And this isn't the first time, Mary. It's every, every time we turn around, you have not, you hold off the-- Are you, let me ask you this, and I'm closing. Are you trying to break the police union?
Thank you, Mr. Cowe. Thank you for your comment.
Are you trying to break the police union?
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Okay.
I think that's very rude to ignore me.
So can I finish my--
No, it's 20 minutes.
It's not 20 minutes.
Okay, Mrs. Coe, I'm not gonna allow this, this--
Can I speak at the end of the meeting?
Would anyone else like to address the board? If not, I'm gonna move on. I will entertain at the end and see if there's a vote.
There's a rule that 20 minutes of public, to the public audience--
There's no rule that allows people to speak more than five minutes at a time.
There is a rule that there's 20 minutes of public talk.
I, I'm not debating. I'm gonna go to, I said I would entertain it at the end.
At the end of the meeting?
Mrs. Coe, I told you, I'm gonna entertain it if there's a motion at the end.
You can entertain--
Thank you. I'll now move into the action of the board. We did, just one housekeeping matter before we begin our meeting. We did adopt at our last meeting municipal adoption resolution to enter into the 2014 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update, if the board remembers. We were so good in getting our business done early that CROG hadn't had a chance to write the resolution for towns to form, to adopt. So they've asked us to just read the motion in their form into the record. It's exactly the same motion that we did pass, but it's not in the form that they would like us to see. So I do ask the board to amend the agenda, just allow us to read this resolution to the record. In order for the town clerk to sign, the resolution has to be read in this format. I apologize, we didn't have this information at the last meeting. It's really no change in what we did. It is a housekeeping matter, and I just would ask the board first to amend the agenda, to take up this item, and then we'll amend, and then we'll act on this item.
So I move that we amend the agenda to accept the resolution for the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of amending the agenda to take up this item? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we need a volunteer to read the motion into the record, so--
Keep that--
Mike?
I'll do it.
Oh, okay.
I'll do it. I'm all warmed up tonight.
Yeah, who's gonna volunteer?
I move that we accept the following resolution, that the Town of Simsbury Resolution adopting the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update, whereas the Town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen recognizes the threats that natural hazards pose to people and property with the Town of Simsbury, and whereas the Town of Simsbury, in collaboration with the Capital Region Council of Governments, CROG, has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan known as 2019, should say 14 through 2019--
Yeah.
--Capital--
Thank you.
--Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, and whereas the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update has identified mutual goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property from the impacts of future natural hazards and disasters that affect the Town of Simsbury and the region, and whereas public and committee meetings were held between March 15, 2012, and October 2, 2013 regarding the development review of the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update, and whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Homeland Security, has approved the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update on condition of local adoption, enabling the Town of Simsbury to apply for the hazards, the hazard mitigation grant funding, and whereas adoption by the Town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen demonstrates their commitment to achieving the hazard mitigation goals outlined in the Town of Simsbury's section of the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update, now therefore be resolved that the Town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen hereby adopts the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update.
Very well done. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions? Again, I think we want to thank everybody who participated, the Planning Commission, the Board of Selectmen, there were a number of public hearings. And just to reiterate, this will allow the Town of Simsbury to put some best practices in place to address natural disasters, and will also allow us to apply for grants. Do we have any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all very much. We'll now move on to the First Selectmen's report. I just want to start by announcing that the Town of Simsbury Public Works Department is kicking off its annual leaf collection pickup, and Tom Roy, our Public Works Director, is here with a new online program. You'll want to sign up immediately. To find out when your leaves will be picked up, you can simply go to the Town of Simsbury website and click on Leaf Collection 2014. That will take you to a site where you enter your street number and name, and the site will give you the date that the leaf collection will be held. We do pick up leaves only, and the leaves must be bagged in biodegradable brown paper bags. They must be left at the edge of the road, and they are scheduled to be picked up on a specific day. The first day of leaf collection pickup is November 12, so I want to thank Tom Roy and his staff for all the hard work that they do, and invite folks to go check out the website, and you will get the date of the collection. Also want to remind our residents that Election Day statewide will be held on November 4. Residents have until tomorrow, Tuesday, October 28, to register to vote in person. There are also provisions for the first time this year to vote on the day of the election, and if you want more details, you can contact the registrar's office at 860-658-3267 or 860-658-3269 if you need more information. There's also information on the town clerk's webpage, which has a lot of information about elections, sample ballots, explanatory text for the proposed amendment to the state constitution regarding absentee ballots, information about how to determine your polling place, and much more. On Election Day, all four polling places, all of the four polling places will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. They are District 1, Henry James; District 2, Latimer Lane; District 3, Tooton Hills; and District 4, Tarifill School. And again, I would like to thank the town clerk and the registrars for their hard work in ensuring a fair and accessible election process. I also wanted to remind our residents that Halloween party is being held by the Culture Parks and Rec Commission, Social Services, and the library on October 30, Thursday, October 30. This is a fun and safe way for kids to trick or treat, so please enjoy the parade at 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the library.
No storms.
No storms, yes. I haven't checked the forecast, but I'm, but I'm hoping. And then finally, just wanted to update our residents about the Farmington Valley Health District's efforts to monitor the Ebola status. As you know, the Town of Simsbury works with the Farmington Valley Health District. The district met recently with town emergency personnel, including police, fire, volunteer ambulance, school, and town officials, to review our procedures for responding to infectious diseases, including early identification of cases and strategies to control the spread of illness. We were informed that the state of Connecticut has set up a website, which you can reach at www.ct.gov/ebola, and the site provides risk information about Ebola virus infection, a map of the West African countries affected by Ebola, and information about actions that the state of Connecticut is taking to prevent the spread of the virus should someone in Connecticut become sick with Ebola. The Director of Health in our region, Jennifer Kurtanas, also issued a number of best precautions for our residents to take, not only during this time, but also because of the flu season that we're entering into. And that is, you know, just some basic reminders about staying home when you're sick to prevent the spread of illness to coworkers, teachers, and classmates. Getting a flu shot, we have places in town that they're available free. Wash hands regularly with warm soap and water, and reinforce this practice with children. And when you cough or sneeze, make sure to cover your, your mouth. And also avoid contact with someone else's fluids as well. So just, I won't read the rest. But just remember to take best practices and become informed about Ebola. And I want to thank Jennifer Kurtanas and the Health District for working closely with the town and the school and our emergency responders in making sure we are prepared for an infectious disease situation. And finally, hot off the press, the police department has been honored. Chief Ingivertson, Captain Bolter, were honored among the first 100-plus by Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence. We received a report today that the chief and the captain are being honored by the Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence as the first 100-plus men who have made a difference in the coalition's effort to assist victims of domestic violence in Connecticut. This organization has researched best practices for public education with regard to awareness of domestic violence and risk factors for potential problems. The state of Connecticut averages 14 domestic violence homicides annually over the past decade, so I want to thank the chief and the captain for working with a number of organizations, including Interval House, and making sure that we address this as a public safety issue. And we look forward to recognizing them as they're honored for the statewide award. That concludes my updates. We'll move now to action items. First item is to approve tax refunds. These are refunds that have been reviewed by the tax collector. They totaled $2,644.90. These have been reviewed and are recommended, and only the Board of Selectmen can refund taxes. So can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next item is just an update on the town's interest in purchasing One Old Bridge Road. If you recall, the Board of Selectmen did authorize the town to pursue the purchase of One Old Bridge Road, subject to Planning Commission and Board of Finance approval. Just to recap, the property is .52 acres. It is located entirely within the 100-year floodplain, and while its existing residential structure could remain as a non-conforming use in the FEMA floodplain area, it is certainly best practices and certainly in keeping with the Hazard Mitigation Floodplain update that the Boards, Board of Selectmen adopted and the Planning Commission adopted to encourage residents to move out of the floodplain so that we won't have to risk rescue and recovery of people who live in those areas. The board has talked about what our next steps are, and we reviewed this with the Planning Commission earlier. I want to thank Selectman Payne and Selectman Hefner for also attending the Planning Commission special meeting that was held at 6 o'clock. I want to thank the Planning Commission for having a special meeting this evening, earlier this evening, to also review the proposal. We are currently looking at a cost of $150,000 for acquisition, and we have outlined a number of costs that we would like to budget for that we're not sure how much it would have to be used, but certainly a cost for hazardous material removal. We are working on specific plans for the property, but that, again, will depend on what FEMA and Department of Environmental and Energy will allow us to do in that area, and certainly Conservation Commission as well. We are exploring grants for the project, and we're also consulting with the Plan of Conservation and Development to see what type of passive recreation would be appropriate for that area. So I just wanted to update the board. We also have received communication from the Drake Hill Flower Bridge, which strongly encourages the Town of Simsbury to acquire and develop the One Old Bridge Road, and they feel very strongly that it will be, that the acquisition will help make the Flower Bridge a more desirable destination. So there's no action required tonight. The next step is for the Board of Finance to review the acquisition. Any questions? Lisa?
I just wanted to thank Kyron Teck who put together my notes as to how this is consistent with our planning documents, and if you look at the packet he put together, there's a page and a half of how it complies with different parts of the P O C D. So it is entirely consistent with every document that we have. And so it is entirely consistent with every document that we have in terms of planning and goals that we have for the town. So I want to thank Mr. Teck for doing that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We'll update the board once the Board of Finance has reviewed the proposal. Next item is a review and possible action on textile recycling program.
I'll need to recuse myself.
Thank you. Note that Mr. Payne is removing himself from the discussion. At a recent CROG meeting, we discussed, which I am proud to represent Simsbury and chair, we reviewed how textile collection has been adapted in a number of towns and how it's successful it's been in not only removing items from the waste stream, but also providing some revenue. And I asked Tom Roy to review the proposal and to discuss this with the town's recycling committee, and some are here tonight. So I want to thank Tom and the members of the recycling committee for considering this recommendation, and it is coming to the Board of Selectmen with a favorable recommendation and action. So Tom, thank you.
Mary Turner was not able to make it tonight, but she asked that I distribute this information. Some of the information may have gotten to you earlier by email, but in here, the graph just shows a little bit about what some of the other towns have reported so far in their collection. It also has the direct language that she has from the recycling committee in terms of their support.
This is an interesting program, and what they're actually doing here is we're collecting not just clothes that are gonna be reused, but it's also collecting the more worn items of clothing and textiles that will be, as the company goes through the bin, they basically segregate, the best materials are gonna be reused, the next classification is going to be turned into rags that they'll sell to-- The next classification is going to be turned into rags that they'll sell to commercial applications. The next category below that, they will actually shred and reuse the fibers. So there's a variety of different ways that the materials will be used. And ultimately, they will be paying the town $97 per ton of textiles recycling. It includes shoes and stuffed animals and stuff that may not be able to be collected elsewhere. And again, it also includes bed linens and things that are a little bit more worn and may not have the typical reuse from something like a Salvation Army. Our current plan would be to put one bin at the landfill. The plan would also be to leave, there is currently a Salvation Army bin there, we would be leaving that at the existing location. And we would also, when entering into this contract, this would be the only bins that we would be allowed on town property unless we exclusively list those in the contract upfront. So we'd have to make that decision as to whether or not we'd want other bins on town property. We can get more of the bins from this textile recycling company, which was bid through the Capital Region. It's Bay State is the name of the company, they're based out of Massachusetts. They went through a large vetting process with the Capital Region. They've done this for a number of years. The system is up and running, and in terms of us, we'd be signing under the larger municipal agreement. It's been reviewed by Town Council. So I guess I'd be open to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions? Lisa?
If we were going to do other bins, where would you recommend we do them? Would you?
I personally think the landfill is the ideal location. It's out of sight, out of mind. Some municipalities have put them at schools. I don't think personally that this building would be the appropriate location. I don't personally think parks would be the appropriate location.
So your recommendation is just the one?
I would really, unless for some reason we saw a drastic need, I would keep it as just the one location.
And Tom, if, I think it would, I'd ask the recycling committee to monitor it since that's their goal. And if we did, if they did decide that we want to add a bin, what's the, is that permissible to add it later?
It would be easy to add it later. There's provisions in the contract. The other thing that we've put in here in terms of the request tonight is to authorize the First Selectmen to be authorized to enter into this contract. And we have also asked that we be allowed to create a special revenue fund so that that $97 per ton go back to the recycling committee to be used for other recycling efforts that they'd be looking to undertake.
So if they wanted to advertise this program or the programs, they would use those funds?
Exactly. Or the Swap Shack or some of the other initiatives that they're taking. And that would have to go to the Board of Finance. I've reviewed it with Joe Mancini. He's supportive of the concept. I don't believe that we're looking at a large sum of money on an annual basis, and I think that we'd certainly be able to relook at the issue if we suddenly saw more than what we had expected.
Would this be the same fund that we, well, let me start over again. The TIPS program, weren't we going to deposit that money into a fund for the recycling?
Under our new recycling ordinance, the plan was to use a portion of that fund for the recycling committee as well. Yes.
And was that going to go into the same special revenue fund as this, or is that a different?
I would probably recommend that it go into the same special revenue fund rather than have multiple pots of money.
Right. That's what I was wondering.
Let me ask you a follow-up question. Did we create that revenue fund?
That revenue fund has not been created at this point.
So, yeah, because right now it's going to the general fund, right?
I believe it's either going to the general fund, or we had a account which was set up under the landfill in the past where we had gotten a transportation offset through CRRA. And I believe at that point, at this point, we've received, I think, four payments under that new program. And I believe that they have actually gone into that account at this point. I've been working with our finance director on getting that cleaned up and making sure that we get that special revenue fund established sooner rather than later.
I just have one quick follow-up. Is there any pushback from like Goodwill, Salvation Army?
There's been no direct pushback, but the one thing in talking with members of the recycling committee is we want to be very clear that we have appropriate signage so that they do know the difference between this bin and a Salvation Army bin.
Yeah, and just for clarification, there are other bins in town that are for-profit. So there are other bins that are competing, and I don't think people realize when they place their items in that bin where the money's going. So I think this provides donations to Goodwill or Salvation Army if clothes are in good condition, and then folks can make the choice that rather than throwing them to the waste stream, they could, they have another option of putting them into a bin that is recyclable, encourages recycling, and also provides some revenue back to the town. So there already is, are those competitive bins for the other ones?
I was thinking about that. I don't think a lot of people do know about that.
Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa and then Nancy.
Can you give me an estimate of how much money you think we're going to generate from those two programs for the recycling committee?
Well, the other program, I think we'd estimate it in the neighborhood of $20,000 per year, off the top of my head. This program, I got to tell you, it's hard to say. It really is. Because in Simsbury, we have so many of the bins for charitable, we have so many of the bins at convenient locations which are for profit.
Just ballpark.
I mean, my guess would be is if we got $3,000 or $4,000 a year out of this bin, we would be doing great.
So potentially, the recycling committee would have $23,000 to work with?
Potentially. And then they've also talked about using some of that funding to offset some of the town initiatives that we're currently doing on budget, such as the household hazardous waste collection.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure that we can hear, so just go ahead.
So, yeah, it could be in that range, yes.
Okay, Nancy.
I just was curious, does Salvation Army have any other bins in town besides the one currently at the landfill?
To be honest, I don't know. I can tell you, you know, it's one of those things that you start looking at something like this, all of a sudden you notice more and more and more.
I share some of the concern that Cheryl was talking about in terms of other folks that might, you know, and knowing that some are for-profit and others aren't, but that this might actually end up being a good thing. And, you know, you're explaining that some are for reuse, I think is important for people to know that that, those items.
Yeah, and to be honest, you know, originally when this was first presented to us, the way it was originally packaged, you know, right as it came off the presses before they'd really had time to answer a lot of questions, they were talking a lot more about that textile to be used for the fibers materials and the shredding of it. And I personally was very concerned because, you know, we wouldn't want to see residents unknowingly putting good clothing that could be reused into a bin that was going to be shredded. But in meeting with representatives from Bay State, they were very clear that especially from their business model, there's no value in them nor to the general public to take something that's perfectly good and not reuse it.
Any other questions?
With that, I move that we authorize the First Selectmen to enter into a three-year agreement with Bay State Textiles, Inc. for the collection of textiles for a single bin located at our transfer station, and authorize that the funds generated through the sale of the textile materials for this program be used in support of the town's recycling committee program with the approval of the Board of Finance, which means we're going to set up a special revenue fund. And I'd like to see that on an annual basis come back to this board from a budgetary standpoint.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll include this in our, you'll get an update on the special revenue funds later in the meeting, but we'll make sure we add this to that list of special revenue funds as well.
Just so it knows, my motion did not include the TIPS fees being part of that at this time.
Correct, we're not asking for that. Correct. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tom, you want to introduce the members of the recycling committee?
We actually have the members of Clean Energy Task Force here tonight. We have Claudia Sarakowsky and Susan Van Cleef, and I think they might actually come on up and help me with this next presentation.
Excellent.
Because I got a lot stacked up tonight and...
Excellent.
I am also on the recycling committee.
I know, that's why. You threw me off, because I knew you were here.
On behalf of both.
She's playing double duty tonight. But tonight's very exciting for the Clean Energy Task Force. We've been working for a long time in trying to get the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge in front of this board. And I don't know if you want to give a quick explanation on what that program is?
I think Susan might be able to do it a little bit better. It's changed a few times.
Right, okay. You want me to come over here? All right, so I'm winging it. I didn't know Tom was going to have a talk. So the program is basically the program that has come through CFI, the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority. And it does change. It does change. But right now, they have sort of a two-pronged approach. They have a clean energy approach which provides programs for individuals and businesses and municipalities and nonprofits and to invest in clean energy. They also have energy efficiency approach. When people within Simsbury partake in these programs, we get some sort of points. And it's, that also has changed, but right now, there's still a program, we will get nine kilowatts.
Nine KW.
Nine kilowatts of solar voltacs to put on a school or on any other public building that they approve. We will get that. Plus, we also will get a $10,000 grant that's supposed to be put back into some sort of energy efficiency type program. And then in the future, by participating in these energy efficiency type programs, those types of rewards could keep coming.
So if a residential user signs up for Clean Energy Program, which I have signed up for...
The Clean, the thing we were started for, the Clean Energy Task Force, that doesn't even exist anymore.
I know.
It's more the Clean, it's not the Clean Energy option on your electric bill anymore. It's more the energy audits.
Right.
It's buying an energy efficient furnace. It's getting your home insulated or new windows. I think they're just really going for things with more substance.
So that's how the town, that's how town residents can help us participate in this program?
Right.
Okay. And, well, thank you. And thank you for bringing both the Board of Ed pledge as well, because tonight, we just received a letter today that's included in your packet with the Board of Ed. Tom's been working with the superintendent and the Board of Ed on making sure that this isn't just a town initiative, but it's also a town and school initiative. And we really, even though the town has qualified for the solar panels, we thought those probably would be best used at the school so that kids can see the direct benefit of solar energy. So congratulations on that. Claudia?
I should just add, just to give a little bit of context how long we've been trying to get the solar panels. I was in high school, I was 15, I started the environmental club there, and we were trying to get the solar panels. And it's seven years later, almost eight, and I'm really excited just to see them on the school, so.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry how, how old I feel. Share that story with us, thank you.
You're old as well.
So this is great.
Just a couple of real quick notes. The goal is to reduce our energy consumption in our town buildings and Board of Education buildings by 20% by the year 2018. There is no penalty if we don't meet that goal, but it's a worthy goal to achieve. We're also going to be looking to purchase 20% of our energy for these buildings from renewable sources. We can do that in a number of ways, either using solar that we may own ourselves and also buying what's called renewable energy credits. The overall budgetary impact on those is in the neighborhood of $1,000 or less for the town per year. So very minimal budget impact, and I think we're hopefully going to save more energy than we would spend in renewable energy.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident that will more than offset the cost by the time we finish the fiscal year as well. So that's great. Questions for Tom? Sean?
Just in radius, Tom, it looks like we're already on our way to doing it, because we participated in both CPACE and Solarize, right?
We purchased, yeah, so by participating in some of CFI's programs, they actually will reduce that 20% goal for the purchase of the renewable energy credits, Solarize being one, CPACE being another. And that goes for the duration of this municipal pledge, so it's not only for this year we're participating in Solarize, but it helps us every year going forward.
You probably remember that we already adopted this pledge.
Yeah.
It's coming back because...
No, I'm just saying, we're already on our way.
Right, and they're making us redo it with some new requirements.
No, I'm good with it. My point is we can beat the 20% because we're already at 15 for one of these numbers.
That's right.
We're on our way.
Yeah.
I think that's a good thing.
Other questions? Okay, so you would like us to, a motion to authorize the First Selectmen to enter into the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge on behalf of the town of Simsbury, and we would be the 108th town in Connecticut to join the program.
Do we have a second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Congratulations. Next item is to, just stay where you are, right there, Mr. Roy?
Run.
No, just him. He's... You can, if you want.
Surprise.
Tom Roy is here again to, and ask us to approve three applications for the Intertown Capital Equipment Purchase Incentive Program. And I'm thrilled because this is a regional incentive program. This is one of the programs that we fought hard at the Capitol to encourage regional cooperation. We've seen in Simsbury that regional cooperation has saved us dollars and allowed us to reduce costs to our taxpayers. We recently had this on our agenda at the Farmington Valley Collaborative, and I want to thank Lisa, Mike, and Cheryl for coming to that meeting. And at that meeting, it was discussed some initiatives that Tom had taken the lead on for the Farmington Valley towns. And as a result of that meeting, we even had more interest and more applications than what we had discussed at that meeting. So this is a great opportunity for us to buy some equipment at a reduced cost, work with our neighbors, and reduce costs to our taxpayers. So why don't you go ahead, Tom, and just walk us through?
Boy, I tell you, between their help and your help on that...
You don't have to do anything. There you go.
Long and short of it, we have three different grant applications, rather than packaging them all up in one. Each town had different needs, and in working with the towns in our region, this is the three packages which we thought both best fit our needs as a town and the community and also has the best chance of being accepted. For two of the projects, the four-ton hot boxes and the track paving equipment, the grants pay for 50% of the cost of the equipment, and that's because we are working with Bloomfield, where Bloomfield is considered a public investment community, and therefore, instead of being 70% grants, they're 50, or I'm sorry, instead of being 30% grants, they're 50% grants. So there's definitely an advantage to working with Bloomfield on these. The third grant would be for a roadside mower, which would be just between East Granby and Simsbury. That's a piece of equipment that we were scheduled to be purchasing in two years anyways. We believe that we would be able to make do rather well with that piece of equipment, even though it would be shared between us and East Granby. So I guess I would open it up to questions.
Any questions? Lisa?
Tom, could you explain to the public where the money, how we're paying for this out of this year's budget? Because we are, and you've explained it to me, but I think the public would benefit from hearing it.
First thing we're going to say, when we get the grants?
Yes, hopefully. It's very competitive, so...
It's very competitive. If we were fortunate enough to get accepted on all three grants, as they're currently displayed here, the total expense to the town of Simsbury would be $47,625. We would be paying for that using Town Aid Road Funding, which is state money that we receive each and every year for the maintenance of our roadway infrastructure. We currently have an account which has ample funds to cover this. And again, with this being equipment that we had anticipated spending far more on this in upcoming years, it would not deplete that fund, and there's plenty of money available right now to cover that full cost.
And if you look at the cost of the equipment, that's a bargain. I mean, one piece of equipment costs $112,000, another piece costs $40,000, and the roadside mowers $95,000. So to share those pieces of equipment had to reduce costs for less than $47,000, that was pretty good.
Yeah, and in coming up with the number of pieces of equipment, the number of towns involved, we are all, myself and all of the other DPW directors involved in this, are all comfortable that we would get adequate use out of these pieces of equipment to fulfill our needs. Certain things certainly don't work well for sharing.
Like cloths.
Snowplows. I said, I said, you can have it, you know, you can have it nine months out of the year, I just need it for three. Nobody fell for that one. But this is all stuff that we would share either on, you know, half-week or week bases. And again, we share quite a bit of equipment amongst our neighboring towns, and it has served us all well.
Great. Any other questions?
With regard to the insurance and other legal matters that go along with this, any increased costs that you were anticipating with that?
I would not. With the value of this equipment compared to the overall value of equipment that we have within Public Works, it's relatively small. And then we already have intertown, interlocal agreements between the towns. I'm not sure if we have an interlocal agreement with Bloomfield. That would be the only town we would have to add. We'd follow the same language that we did when we did the trail maintenance equipment five years ago, I think.
Yeah, that was one of the originally, before we started doing the regional incentive grants, one of the concerns was how insurance and liability was going to work, and there were model agreements that were entered into. So this would follow the same inter-local agreements that are in place, and that the law allows us to do.
Excellent. I think it's a great program. It was really a good idea.
Then we just need a motion. Would someone like to?
You need a motion?
Oh.
I'll do the motion, and I'll let you second it.
Thank you. Second.
Well, he has to read it first.
Yeah, yeah.
Slow down. Okay, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen supports the town's participation in the ICE program, whereas the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management, OPM, is accepting grant applications for inter-town, inter-town capital equipment ICE purchase incentive program, and whereas the ICE program was established by CGS Section 4-66M and provides partial funding for any two or more municipalities for the acquisition of capital equipment that will be shared between the participating communities, and whereas the communities must provide the corresponding matching funds, and whereas a formal inter-local agreements, I guess that's the way you say it, agreements, as approved by the Board of Selectmen, will be executed by all participating municipalities prior to their receipt of grant funding. Now, therefore, be it resolved, one, the Town of Simsbury, the Simsbury Board of Selectmen supports the Public Works Department participation in the ICE purchase incentive program for the filing of three separate grant requests with a maximum potential expense to the Town of Simsbury of $47,625, subject to further consideration and action by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance in the event that the grant is awarded to the town and to the First Selectmen is hereby authorized to execute documents consistent with this resolution.
Second.
Bless you.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Thanks for your hard work. And thanks for taking the lead on, on the application tip. Appreciate it. Next is a tax abatement and business development incentive policy. I want to thank the Business Development Committee for initiating the draft. Also, the Economic Development Task Force and EDC also had input. Also, I think this was scheduled to be on the agenda for next meeting, but fortunately, we had a meeting with Town Council last week. We were able to look at the draft, and I know the board doesn't have, hasn't had a time to, we wanted to get to the board as soon as we got it. So we sent the draft to the town attorney again today, but also wanted to bring it to the board's attention so that we could start the process of sending it back to the Business Development Committee and the EDC to take a look at it, and then to the Board of Finance and get it back to us. So we, I'm thrilled that Hiram did a great job in working with Town Council, incorporating the Business Development Committee questions, the EDC questions, Town Attorney's questions. We took a look internally at our implementation process, and I think this is a great draft to work from, and I think we should, should have enough time to forward it to other groups to look at, and then have back, back to the Board of Selectmen for discussion. So, any questions? Lisa?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Economic Development Task Force Subcommittee on Programming, which is chaired by Deborah Bernard. Thank them for working, the Hiram and Hiram, for working with them and taking their research and considerations into account.
You go, please.
Okay, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Lisa.
For taking our research and considerations into account, I want to give credit to them. They did an excellent job working with Mr. Peck. And Mr. Peck, thank you for incorporating those suggestions in this draft.
Questions?
I'd comment myself here, because thank you for having this on the agenda. I know I submitted enough form to have this on the agenda.
We actually had it done earlier than you.
Well, hey, look at that.
There you go.
And so, and Lisa, I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Deborah Bernard, because there certainly has been some work done by the Task Force, but they themselves have not seen this. It wasn't available, of course, for them to look at that. So I would like to see this go back to the Task Force. One of the items that we had discussed about plans early on was to do this review of incentive programs, benchmarking other communities and such, and would like the Task Force to continue their work to do that. And so that would just be my added comment. Thank you.
Any other questions? If the board has no objection, then we'll refer this to the Business Development Committee, make sure they get a copy, the EDC, the Task Force, and Chamber Commerce, and Board of Finance. So we'll circulate it around, and Main Street.
Yeah, I think my point to be made, though, is to actually ask us to go back to the Task Force and have them continue spearheading this effort.
Well, I think it has to go back to all of those groups, because the Business Development Committee directed me to have it sent back to them, too.
Right, and there are folks, actually, three of the five folks are on the Task Force that are on the Business Development Committee, so they're reviewing that.
We're going to post it on the website, so everyone can have a comment. So, I mean, I certainly, the EDC and the Task Force will certainly get a copy, but other groups have also requested we do.
Oh, and I don't, I don't have any problem with other folks having the ability to review that, but what I would like to do is, as was discussed as our goals for September, most recently through the Task Forces, this is one of the goals that they'll be working on to make a recommendation through the Economic Development Commission, the Business Development Committee. So those discussions have already taken place, and I'd like to see that path of this work continue. It's certainly not to discourage anybody else from making comments, but it's to shepherd it back through that group who had been working on it previously.
I'm going to refer to everybody, and then we'll get, we'll get the comments back, all the groups. Yes, sir?
So with that, so we're going to have comments from five different bodies come back to us?
Everybody has a chance to look at it. The Business Development Committee asked that a draft be sent to them, so that's a formal recommendation, so that has to go back to them.
I'm just asking how the comments are going to come back.
The EDC should, should have discussions with the Task Force. I think that's been the process that they've been working with. The Chamber Commerce and Main Street would, would also provide comments back to EDC or the Board of Selectmen, and then Hiram will take those comments and then do another draft with Town Attorney after we get that back. And folks, I think it'd be easy to know, I mean, board can do whatever they want, because these groups are going to comment anyway.
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful to know what, what the comments of the Chamber are with respect to their interests, what the comments from EDC are with respect to their comments. Board of Finance actually has to approve the funding at the end of the day.
Absolutely.
So they have to have a say, so that we can actually get the money once we vote to do it. So I think it's a very important consensus-building process, and certainly all those groups have to be at the table in order for us to have a workable, meaningful discussion of, this is a very important change in our tax incentive policy. We have to make sure that we have the funding in place to do it, and certainly the consensus of the business community and the other boards and committees.
Absolutely. My, my only point, Mary, was that it, I think it'd be easier, probably, at least for me, and when I, when I voted for the Task Force was just this work. So I, you know, I suggest that we send it to the Task Force. They aggregate everybody's comments, send it back up through EDC, back up to us.
You could do it. I don't support that. The Business Development Committee specifically requested that they get a chance to look at the draft, so I'm obligated to give it back to them. I don't even...
Again, not precluding you from sending it. Your prerogative is sending it around.
I'm going to put it on the agenda, the EDC. I'm going to put it on the agenda that you can vote wherever you want, but I'm telling you, it's going to go to all these groups.
That's fine. Well, I'll just make a really easy point. I move that we send this to the Economic Task, the Development Task Force for aggregating those comments, and then I'd like to see it come back up through the EDC from the Task Force itself. That's my motion.
And I would heartily second that and just make the additional comments that Main Street is also on the Task Force Board. Chamber is also on the Task Force Board. So there is a synergy of that membership specifically built around the idea of collaboratively working on stuff like this. So I would second that motion.
I'm very disappointed with this group. You know, we have statutorily and chartered groups that are supposed to do just this. And by sending it to a task force of people who aren't elected and who don't represent all of the groups, it's disappointing that you would want to do that. So I'm, I will not, if this motion passes, I will not send it around to the Chamber. I will not send it around, and, and you guys can figure out how you want to build consensus without inviting everybody at the table. So I just strongly disagree with that process.
And I would just make another strong comment to the fact that that task force was built with the sole purpose of creating that synergy and inviting all those groups to the table.
And I think that you said, Ms. Hossi, that the EDC would be overseeing the task force.
Absolutely.
And so now you're bypassing the EDC.
No, I'm not.
I'll point you back to my motion.
I'm not discussing, but...
My motion said to go back through the EDC.
Yes. All task force comments go through the Economic Development Commission?
I don't believe that was the motion. Could you read it back to me, Lisa? I think it was to go to the EDC. What was the motion on the table?
My motion was to, for us to refer this to the Economic Development Task Force, for them to aggregate all comments and to send that back up through the EDC to this body.
I didn't write the whole motion.
That was my motion.
I don't recall that that was the original motion, so if you could restate the most...
I just amended the motion. That's the motion I made. We can go to SC TV and look at it, but...
I just want to make sure what we're voting on. So if you could clarify what the motion is.
Very simply, we are referring this draft to the EDC, Economic Development Task Force. The Economic Development Task Force is going to aggregate all those bodies' comments, send their recommendation back up through EDC to this board for final consideration.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second that.
My only concern is that the Business Development Committee specifically voted to get a draft and to have it go back to them.
They can have it, too.
They have nothing to do with the EDC Task Force, so you're bypassing at least that committee.
They can have it, too.
That's not what your motion said.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does this preclude the Business Development Committee from, I mean, so we're not saying nobody...
We can put it up on the website.
Any of these other...
How are they going to have a formal process? They're not, they don't exist formally. They were going to have a special meeting, because they're not, not, those people are not on the task force. So at a minimum, you have to, I mean, I, at a minimum, I would respectfully request you to amend your agenda, amend your motion to include the Business Development Committee and the Economic Development Task Force that works with the EDC.
I think Sean's motion said to have, go to the Economic Development Task Force, and comments come aggregate through that. So that doesn't mean the...
Well, what do they mean, the Business Development Committee?
Well, as I mentioned, there's three members that are already on that, so...
There are people who aren't. How do they get, how do they get involved?
They are welcome to come to our meetings. I've invited the EDC numerous times to our meetings, and several people come and participate, so.
Okay. Then I'm going to write back to the Business Development Task Force that they have, that their request to be considered is not being honored by this board. That's fine. Lisa?
The ultimate decision for this is with the Board of Selectmen. And I think it's important that the Board of Selectmen, that people who want to comment on this be able to comment to the Board of Selectmen. I think it's important that, that they should not have to run it through certain groups. The, the Task Force can certainly seek the opinions of people as they make their recommendation. I have no problem with that. But I don't think people should be prohibited from making comments to this board. And I, I want to say that I absolutely, absolutely welcome those comments. I would like to see them from Chamber. I'd like to see them from Main Street. I'd like to see it from businesses who aren't in Chamber or Main Street. I'd like to, the Business Development Committee asked for this. These are members, they're all elected, I think, and one at large.
Represent...
And represent boards that are impacted by this decision. So this is not something that we should delegate to another board. This is for us to decide. I would like to decide it with as much knowledge, and I am on the Subcommittee for Economic Development Task Force, and would certainly take it back to them and get their strong recommendations. They've done a tremendous amount of research. I've done a tremendous amount of research, and would be happy to provide that advice to this board in its consideration. And I think that's the, but I'd also, I'm also interested in what the EDC has to say. I'm also interested in what Chamber has to say. I'm also interested in what Main Street has to say. I'm also interested in what members of this community who pay taxes have to say. So I would just broaden it rather than narrow it.
Lisa, my intent is for all those groups to comment to one body versus sixteen.
And where are they, and how do they comment? I don't even know who's coordinating this.
Mary, you can say the same thing about the Business Development Committee. You're the chair of the Business Development Committee.
Well, here's my question.
So it's, it's very simple. We could say that about any...
So who do comments go to?
The Economic Development Task Force.
Where? At what address and what location?
They all go through Hiram Peck, and they have been, any discussions that we've had, I have always copied the Economic Development Commission on all meeting minutes.
So if people want to comment, they go through Hiram Peck?
If they were going to comment to the EDC, where would they go?
Sean's motion is to have all comments come through the Task Force. Hiram as staff is part of that, so that would make sense.
The intent is for all bodies to be able to participate, Lisa, to your point, but I don't want seven bodies randomly sending comments around, nobody aggregating them, pulling the good ideas, putting it all together, sending the draft back up to this board.
What are you afraid of?
And if...
By sending it tonight, what are you afraid of?
Mary, I'm not afraid of it. Don't twist my intent.
I think it's so important that the Board of Selectmen send it directly to the Chamber and invite comments to the Board of Selectmen. I think it's...
Mary, I will send it to the Chamber myself. It's very simple. I can do it right now before we even email. I'm not suggesting that we exclude any bodies. I'm looking for one group of people to aggregate all the good comments that are going to come from the Chamber, come from Main Street, come from the Business Development Committee, come from EDC. Put that together, have a very open forum for taxpayers to come in and talk about them. Put it all together, work together, send it through the EDC, send it back up to us, have the Business Development Committee comment again, even though they'll be part of this through that process, so that we can expedite this and not have it bounce around political hell for two years.
Well, I think that just sends a wrong message that you're excluding business groups.
You're saying the word excluding. I'm not. I just said on the record.
That's my opinion. That's my opinion. By not voting to refer to everybody tonight, it seems like we're, we're trying to control the information. So I'll vote against the motion.
Okay.
Do we have a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who opposed?
Four, two.
Lisa, Mary.
And Lisa.
Next item is to authorize the Town of Simsbury to participate in the Gigabit Internet Network Initiative. Again, this was a proposal that came from the Capital Region Council of Governments. The New Haven, towns of New Haven, West Hartford, and Stanford have contacted the Connecticut Consumer Counsel's Office, and they've asked to send out an RFQ for ultra-high-speed gigabyte, or gig internet networks. This is no cost to the town. It just signifies by the town participating is that the town is interested in having high-speed internet to our business community, and we would like to be part of it, and would like to encourage users to let us know how their, their businesses would benefit by high-speed internet, and also to encourage other carriers to provide high-speed internet to Connecticut. So far, there's only three towns that have participated. Town of Middletown will be having a meeting on Friday. I brought this to the Board of Selectmen because I think it's a very important economic development tool. It's important for the town to work along with the Nutmeg Network and the Technology Task Force. The Nutmeg Network, Simsbury was one of the first towns to get the grant. That will allow us to connect with other towns and to start regionalizing a lot of those programs. And here's an opportunity for the Town of Simsbury to say, yes, we want to be part of high-speed broadband network, and we're going to participate. So any questions? Sean?
Just forgive me if this is dumb, but there's a town between us and West Hartford, so how does it get here?
Well, it there's, it's not here.
Like I said, it gets to West Hartford. But how's it, don't we have to get Avon on board or Bloomfield to get it here?
It's actually just a conversation to show, what, what Capital Region Council of Governments wants to do is make sure that everybody in the Capital Region says yes.
Okay.
And then once all the towns say yes, then we can show that there's support, and then hopefully try to attract...
I'm not against it. I'm just logistic, and I always skip to the solutions. It's like, how does it get here?
Logistically, it's really, I think, I think that participating at this point is just a show of interest and to show that this is an economic development tool that we'd like to see. We're a long way from actually implementing.
Okay.
But the goal is, other parts of the country have gotten the Google network, and other parts of the country have gotten high-speed internet, but not Connecticut. So by generating a lot of support from municipalities, we can jump in and say this is important. We'd like to see you talk with us about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah. So with regard to the Nutmeg Network, this is for, it's private, like for private businesses, not just for municipalities, because the Nutmeg Network...
Nutmeg Network is towns.
Connects towns, yeah.
It connects towns, and so that's what we get the grant for, so we can start sharing information with other towns. This is a private...
This would be for everybody.
A private program that would allow businesses to sign up, but it's not available in Connecticut.
Okay.
So by participating, we can say this is really important to our business community. It would really help us have better, you know, attraction of businesses. It would help us allow businesses at home, and so we'd really like to see this come to Connecticut.
Okay.
It's really just a statement of support.
I just wanted to clarify the connection with the...
Yep, yep, no problem.
So there's no real cost to us to do this?
There's no cost, yeah. At this point, we're just saying, you know, this is important to our business community. It's an endorsement. The more towns that we can show that participate and support this type of tool, hopefully we'll be able to dialogue with some vendors and encourage them that there's all this support in Connecticut. Maybe we really should expand it in Connecticut. So, yeah, there's no cost.
Thank you.
Resolution for this one?
No.
Okay.
So are you going to...
I'm done.
What you have to do is just authorize it, in the motion, authorize a town to participate at no cost to an RFP issued by New Haven, West Hartford, and Stanford, seeking to develop, upgrade, and expand broadband infrastructure and improve access to high-speed internet.
Make that motion and correct it. An RFQ.
RFQ. RFQ. That was your, okay.
I make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is to review impossible action on easements and licenses for eight and 10 Firetown Road. This item was on our, the agenda of the Planning Commission that was held earlier this evening. And that was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission unanimously to the Board of Selectmen. This is basically some changes to land records. There's basically a license agreement that has been in existence since 1917. And when the property was in the process of being transferred and sold, one of the banks felt that a license is revocable. And so they indicated they would not issue any, any financing. We did send this to Town Attorney and did have them review it, and basically, Town Attorney recommended approving this. They said that this piece of driveway has been in use since 1917. If the town were to deny this, we probably would have a claim for adverse possession, and, because it has been used in this form for many, many years since 1917. So there's no, no adverse impact to the town. By granting it, it clears title, basically, is what it does. And has been favorably recommended by the Planning Commission earlier this evening. And both Lisa and Mike were there as well.
Yes, I was.
Question?
Simsbury is spelled wrong in the legal description.
Yeah, I think we have to do is, we need to just prove it and based on review and approval by Town Council. There are some, you got the documents that we got.
Right.
The town attorney's going to have to stand and correct some of the documents. So if the board's comfortable with the approval, we would just make it subject to town attorney review and approval.
Substantially as presented, that kind of thing. Okay. And I'm fine with that.
Uh huh. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the easements and license to eight and ten Firetown Road in the form substantially as presented, subject to approval and edits by the town attorney.
Thank you. Any other, do we have seconds?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is to approve the public gathering permit application for the 2014 Simsbury Celebrate Events to be held on November 29. Mr. Toner's here and believes, Jerry, everything is in place for the public gathering permits, subject to town, town review. Everyone's comfortable with the application.
Mary, the meeting, as you have, the submission took place on Thursday, October 2nd. Taryn Ray from our department, who works with the volunteers, was on hand and secured all the approvals. My understanding is the committee is in good shape. They're less than a month away and looking forward to another great event. So we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Jerry.
Will we approve that public gathering permit for the Simsbury Celebrates?
Second up. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is to approve the recommendation of the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission to extend the golf course restaurant lease with the current vendor for two years. Jerry?
I have, Dave Bush is the chairman of the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission and Emmanuel Jarenakis, who's our golf course restaurant vendor. As you recall, Mr. Jarenakis entered into a two-year agreement in 2012 with the town. He's operated the restaurant very successfully since then. The contract allows for a two-year extension to be completed by November 1st of this year. Mr. Jarenakis, in September, expressed his interest in continuing. The commission addressed this at their September meeting, at which time they, they did endorse the concept of entering into a two-year extension. They asked that we negotiate with Mr. Jarenakis, which was done. Their meeting last Thursday, they discussed a proposal, which you have in front of you in the submission. I think the commission overall was, was very satisfied with it and would like to enter into that two-year extension with your approval. And Dave, I can also-
We were unanimous in our support. He's done a great job over the last two years and really what we appreciate is, he's, any input we've given, he's taken that under his wing, made changes, and the feedback has, from the general public as well as our continued users has been actually very, very good.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Manny. Thanks for being here and thanks for your interest in coming back to the town of Simsbury.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll have an early opening next week.
For your sake.
Late closing and early opening.
Just to be optimistic. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
The motion is to extend the contract for two years and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I will tell you, Mary, I've been to a couple of events here. Manny's done a great job. Keep up the good work, Manny.
Thank you, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is to approve, accept the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding proposed donation of .39 acres of open space. This proposal did come with a negative referral from the Planning Commission. However, tonight, I'm going to ask you to table this motion. I did, after receiving the Planning Commission's recommendation, I did consult with our tax collector, Colleen O'Connor, and did ask her to prepare a memo, which you did receive tonight. Probably haven't had a chance to look at yet, but this, this piece of land comes with it encumbered and overdue with property taxes. And as this board knows, what we do when there's unpaid payment of property taxes is we foreclose. Well, if we foreclose, that means we spend money and at the end of the day, we will take the property. And so it seems that the property owner is trying to circumvent that by giving us the property to avoid cost of foreclosure. So rather than asking the board to accept the motion of the Planning Commission, I just asked that we table this so I can have Town Council review the Planning Commission memo and also review the town clerk's memo. In going by the property, I did notice that it is on the Simsbury Grammy line. It's a great place for a "Welcome to Simsbury" sign, so there may be some benefit to accepting the land and using it for town purposes. So because I don't have a recommendation here tonight, I do ask that you table it so that we don't accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I'll have to table that.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. No appointments and resignations tonight, so we're good to go on that. Other business, I did ask the Director of Finance to review our special revenue funds and provide the board with an update. I did ask that he discuss this request with the Board of Finance. It was on the agenda for the Board of Finance meeting at their October 21st meeting. They had some additional questions on special revenue funds. And in the memo here, Joe is incorporating the Board of Selectmen's request plus the additional information that the Board of Finance has requested. So as a result of that, it's not ready for tonight's agenda, but it will be back on the agenda as soon as we have the information gathered. Any questions on that? I think that addresses the board's, the information that's being calculated, I think, addresses the board's concern.
Yeah, I spoke to Joe about it. He's always on the right track. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. Acceptance of minutes, we have to move to accept the regular meeting of October 15th minutes. I'll move this.
Second.
Questions, corrections, comments?
No.
I have one. Page eight, the top line. Board of Education, Ms. Hevness, said the Board of Education met last night and the Board of Education reviewed enrollment status and there are no plans to close any schools at this time. It's not that there were no changes in enrollment. There are changes in enrollment every year.
Okay, so we'll take out "there are no changes" and, and add to the word "reviewed."
Yes.
Thank you. Any other changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Liaison reports, any reports?
I just have a quick one, Mary.
Sean?
We have a, another revenue fund meeting tomorrow in Forests of Simsbury Farm. We'd ask for Mr. Toner and Mr. Bush to come back with some additional information, potential areas to help address the issue so that we could formulate our final recommendations in time for this board to get it and obviously consider that during the budget process. So looking forward to getting that into, into your own hands soon.
Thank you. Any other reports?